You'll come up, sir.
Yes, sir.
And each speaker has five minutes.
Okay. I've got a little pamphlet handout that I can give to all of you or just one of you? I'm not sure who I'd give it to.
It'd be all of us.
Okay. Thank you for letting me, yes, come and um we have a drainage issue. Um it's located at the end of County Road forty-nine and County Road twenty-four. And I apologize for even having to bring this to you guys. I've tried to contact the county engineer on several occasions and haven't got a call back from them. Um this is located at a property we own. And um we've done everything that we can do on our own to try to improve the drainage and without involving the county. Um but what's going on right now is um what we've done, our investigation, we believe is two things and uh I'd call it a classic case of being stuck between a rock and a hard place. I've got a neighbor behind me and above me that have moved some dirt around which has allowed water to flow onto our property at a much increased rate. And then I've got a neighbor below me that has closed off a ditch at a point in the past which has forced the water to drain to a different pathway, which in turn, when we get a heavy rain, the only drainage we have backs up.
You're talking about where he closed the ditch off? You're talking about there at the convenience store?
Yes, sir. And that's further in these pictures. And without going line by line, it's sort of two things. One is what I would call unintentional. The guy above me doesn't even own the property anymore, the guy that caused the the issue. He moved some dirt. He didn't intend to force the water onto us in the way that he did, but it happened. I am working with them to try to fix that problem without involving the county. The guy that owns a convenience store below me will not communicate with me, will not call us back. And I'm not sure that was intentionally done when they tore down a old convenience store and rebuilt a new convenience store.
Now, which which ditch are you talking about he filled up?
If you look through these pictures with me, I've got it highlighted where it used to be. And I've, we are adding new buildings, so our new buildings, it's the same amount of water, but it runs off a bit faster because of the new buildings we've built. But these, this one ditch that we have available to us now, it backs up, it backed up even before we started construction. What's happening now, though, is because the neighbor above us has increased the water, now we've got water getting in our buildings when we get a heavy rain. So if you flip to the first picture that has the blue lines and the red line on it, um it's the second picture. It says drainage before new construction at the top of it. Okay? Those two blue lines will show you where the drainage used to go. The one on the right-hand side of the picture is the drainage that used to run behind the old convenience store. The red line is the footprint of the store now. So you see where that drainage used to go is under where his store is now. He also closed off um about sixty feet of ditch and installed a pipe which reduced the volume of water that the ditch would hold. It's about a six-foot ditch, let's say three foot deep, so you can imagine how much volume that would hold. Now it's all going into an eighteen-inch pipe. So the volume that it would hold got reduced significantly. So it's just a series of events that have led up to now we're forced into pushing all that water into one drain. Um if you flip to the next picture-
Which drain are you talking about you're forced to push it into?
Uh do you see that little yellow line on the left-hand side of the picture? That is the only drain we have available to us.
That's an eighteen-inch?
That is an eighteen-inch pipe and it is making a, I won't say a hard turn. Where it goes under the road, the other side of the road where it empties out, about three feet away from the end of the pipe, the ground level rises. So that water is not able to freely flow out of that pipe.
So the yellow, the yellow represents new pipe?
The yellow is the pipe. When they built the store, they added that six, well, it's sixty-five, sorry, I said sixty, it's sixty-five feet of pipe. And it's fine, they did a decent job putting that pipe in, but again, you take this volume of water that that ditch used to hold when we got a rain, now you've got this volume of water that that pipe will hold when we get a heavy rain.
And the yellow is is feeding that blue pipe?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
What size is that blue pipe?
It's eighteen, it's-
So they're both eighteen, so nothing was lost, nothing was lost on the pipe size?
No, sir, they did not reduce the pipe size, they just reduced the volume that that ditch would hold. So they didn't shrink the pipe down, we did measure that. Um there's no one issue that I would point to that says that's the issue we should fix and that will solve our problem other than the ditch that used to go behind the store. And if you flip to this last, um well, sorry, not the last picture, but this picture that says drainage twenty-sixteen, it's got a little yellow line. I went and found some historical satellite photos. You can see that ditch uh from a satellite view back in twenty-sixteen. That is before they built the store. And I hi- I did highlight it, so uh it it was not yellow on the satellite map, but that is where that ditch was. And you can see that without even highlighting it. And they closed it off. Uh I've spoken to the former owner of that property and he said, the county, when I was a kid, used to clean that ditch out. Now, I know the county probably doesn't go on private property now and clean ditches out, but back in the day, anyway. So he confirmed, he said, there used to be a drainage ditch coming off that property uh through here and connecting to a pipe that's there. So and then that last uh couple of pictures just shows the neighbor above me what they uh moved dirt and redirected the water that's coming down on top of us in a different pathway. But again, that that's just for information, we're trying to work with them to correct that. So a- a- again, we need a way for this water to escape faster. Uh the volume of water is what it is. You've got five acres of property, you've got the same five acres of rain falling on your property. It's more a question of velocity, how much water's moving through there and at what speed, so-
Well, let me ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
Where was the water going before you built the mini storage? Was that water not going around, because it was before Dollar General was built? I'm kind of familiar with this piece of property right here.
Before it was built, you'd have to go back to that twenty-sixteen picture. Some of it was running behind that old, what was called the Country Gent store. So it was, I'd say fifty-fifty, half of it went behind the store, half of it went in front of the store. About the time I bought the property is when they started working on that convenience store and closed it off. So I honestly, I didn't even know it was, there was an old ditch there until I talked to the former owner, who, he still lives across, well, I think his parents actually owned it, still lives across the street.
They live on, he lives, yeah, Ricky Patrick.
Yes, sir, that's that's who I spoke with. And he said, Keith, there used to be a drainage ditch going through there and that guy closed it off. And uh so a- again, um I know there's this Alabama statute that says you cannot stop up water running off somebody's property.
That's not a county, that's a dam.
That's-
That's an A dam problem, that's not-
Now, I'm not trying to put that on y'all, I guess what I'm saying is I I don't even know how you would go about dealing with something of that nature.
I don't know about the others.
Yes, sir.
Quite honestly, it looks like the many storages diverted the water from where it was running around, because I know where the water used to run. The water used to run around behind Harold Patterson's store. Part of it went down in that swag below where Dollar General is now and part went in the ditch.
Yes, sir.
Now, whose fault it got changed? That ain't for me to decide and I don't think it's for this body to decide.
We haven't done any work over there at all. I I can assure you, we have not. It's my neighbor below me and my neighbor above me and I'm willing to do whatever I need to do to push the water, but the only ditch I have available to me is the one out at the roadside.
Well, you've got a sixteen-inch pipe still, you've still got a sixteen-inch pipe thieving. I mean, the county's doing the same thing county's done for years, that sixteen-inch pipe was carrying the water.
I would rather down there today-
Yes, sir.
Have a circle on it. The new mini storages you're building, really need to been built up to a four-foot, three, four-foot and you don't have water problems again, but you done got one pad poured down. It looks like you just maybe pulled the pad and then cut down in the ground for the drain. Um that, I don't know who, I don't know if you're doing or you got a contractor to do it or whatever with that. It ain't the way you build something to make sure that water really, you gotta build it up and let the water flow around it. And it ain't built up and it's coming right across.
Now, that, again, I agree with you, that's the water from the top side, but the water on the lower side backed up before we ever built anything. That pipe at the bottom, which is what you're talking about, Mr. Williams, it backed up before we ever built the first building. That pipe had water backing up in it.
Well, it it, now, don't get me wrong with my question.
Yes, sir.
If it was backing up before that, why'd you build the building in that spot? I mean, that that's my first question. If you built the building in the spot where the water's backing up, then that's that's moot point for this commission again on that. If you see, you following my train of thought here?
Yes, sir.
When I'm looking at it, you built after you knew the water was backing up onto this piece of property. Before whatever happened-
Yes, sir.
We had no water problems there whatsoever that I've been made aware of. And Mr. Edley's been on this commission longer than anybody else and he hasn't heard of any issues up up till now. I can sympathize with your problem, but I don't, I don't see anything that this commission can do as a county to alleviate it.
Well, my request would have been, could we possibly get another drainage across the road instead?
We're gonna be putting it on the people who bought the Patterson property. You're gonna be putting all that water in their yard now.
No, I'm, if we could come up with a situation to split it where there's a drain at the blower end and then there's a drain at the upper end, would have been our idea.
If you go put the drains across that road, they fix the drainage.
Yes, sir. Sure.
It's gonna more or less be a truck wrapped with that, them trucks, from that grab to pick down that hole in that rock.
What's the possibility of getting the ditches below us cleaned out to where they're not above the drain pipe?
You can't go on private property.
No, this is, this is the right of way.
You can ask your engineer to look at it and see if they need cleaning out the elevation. If the elevation's wrong, then we clean them out. If it's not flowing because of, you know, the uh ditch is not elevated correctly.
Yes, sir.
That we would do, I mean, we'd be obligated to do that.
Yes, sir.
But beyond that, uh I'd say you've got, if it's what you say it is exactly like you say it is, you'd have got an A dam issue. Beyond that, I don't know.
Okay.
Good neighbor policy, I guess.
Okay. Well, I appreciate your time.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Uh Cassandra Valardi.
Good evening, my name's Cassandra Valardi. Um my sister and I own property at seventy County Road three twelve in Maplesville. I believe, Ms. Hall, you're from that area. Uh the reason I'd like to uh approach the commission today is um we purchased property latter part of twenty-nineteen uh for a future home in retirement. The business adjacent to us, the property was owned by Wade Burke, used to be a diesel mechanic. It is now early in Romero Niklase, who is a Cuban man, has now put up a chop shop. And I, when I say chop shop, I'm talking about, you're aware, Ms. Hall. They cut up vehicles twenty-four hours a day, gentlemen. There are grinders going, machines going. They have a trailer park out there, sir. They have an RV home, two campers and two box trucks that these Mexicans that know no English, and I even asked them, I'm American Cuban. I'm the first generation on my daddy's side born in the United States. With that being said, there are vehicle batteries tumped over, there are various, and when I say automobiles, I'm talking about every kind of. They have automobiles, ambulances, semi-trucks. They're stacking up these tires, not flat, at an angle. They have brought in dirt that is now shoving the sewage onto my property, our property. And we've approached the county commission, I believe, Mr. Williams, uh my sister spoke with you. And I understand that all of y'all have a a mission statement, Ms. Hall? Do you know ammo shields and Melloa shields?
I do.
Yes, ma'am. All of this diesel is running in the ground and they are on well water. Fortunately for us, we're on city water, so that's not my concern. What my concern is, is this sewage running on our property. Mr. Bone, you have children? You wouldn't want them, this sewage coming into your backyard? But that's what it is, it's flowing in to our property. And our barn to Minion, where my sister lives, is a hundred yards. They have video cameras on us twenty-four hours a day. They know who comes, they know who goes. Now, Chilton County Health Department, Aaron Binion, came out and they had a backfire with the septic tank. It flooded everything. So needless to say, when they brought in dirt like Mr. Cantley, they shunted everything onto our property. Everything. When it rains, it pours. And when I mean pour, sir, I'm talking about it goes all the way across. When we go up to our fence line at night, they start shooting guns. Yeah. And we've contacted Sheriff's Department, I believe, Mr. Sharon, or Deputy, excuse me, Sheriff, Sheriff. Um we had a deputy come out. He wanted my sister to sign a blank IO and he would fill in everything after the fact. That's not right. That's not right at all. We bought this property, like I said, for us to be a retirement. Now, um I know all of y'all have a mission statement. That mission statement is that you're going to make sure that Chilton County is healthy, to make sure that you're a representative leader, to make sure that you serve citizens of Chilton County. Now, I know, Ms. Hall, you were on the city council at at Maplesville. Unfortunately, we are in Maplesville Police jurisdiction. We went to the police, not our concern, it's the county. We went to the county, they send out a deputy. He tells us, there's nothing we can do. And he could survey his property if he wants to. Sir, what, madam, pardon me, what I'm telling you is this camera is twenty-four feet in the air. And when we ride our fence line, it follows us. It's like an eye, you can see it. Mr. Bone, I'm sure you've seen cameras like that. Would you want somebody, excuse me? Um they have two of them now. So it's like this, twenty-four seven, they're up there. If we go ride our fence line, they stop, they run into their vehicles or their homes or whatever that it is that they're living in, box trucks. They are even parking on the right of way. When they went in and redid the pavement or the rock that was there, they took out the drain. It floods all the way across eighty-two. And when it rains, it pours. And you all know that we've had a lot of rain lately. So this oil, this diesel, this battery acid is flowing into the ground and is gonna get in the groundwater. We haven't been able to do anything with him. We've had to file suit and our suit is pending before Judge Pinkston upstairs. Now, we don't have a trial date yet. But I spoke to one of the gentlemen behind the fence and I asked him in Spanish if he had papers. He took off like a rabbit.
Have y'all called A dam?
Oh, yes, sir, A dam hasn't done, pardon the expression, a darn thing.
Well, that, that, that's what, what, they pretty much said calls under A dam.
I understand, sir, I understand. But, you know, what my concern is, is under the Beeson-Hammon Act, we're not supposed to do business and illegal aliens are not supposed to have businesses. I'd be willing to bet my last dime that all of these residents that are living in the trailer park are illegal aliens. Now, the tax assessors come back and assessed my property twice, our property, excuse me. They haven't gone, they've put a building on top of our easement. And when they were shunning in and drilling all of this land, they busted our water line twice. Now, our water line is sitting up on a two-by-four like this. When we went up there and asked them about it, the Mexican guy come out and told us, holding a jigsaw, I'll cut it again. Oh, no, you won't. I don't know what the world y'all do in Mexico, this isn't gonna happen up here. And that's why I'm before the county commission. We need to do something because it's a public nuisance.
Well, when I spoke to your sister once, two years ago.
June of twenty-twenty-four.
Okay, I thought it was two years ago. Uh Health Department did go out as I requested and he, he did all he could do according to him. There's nothing else that anybody here speaks differently, but I don't know of anything this commission can do to alleviate your problem because uh we don't, we don't enforce highest uh requirements.
Under the Hammond-Beeson Act, you are, sir.
Well, ma'am, I don't know what the Hammond-Beeson Act is, I'm not very law enforcement, but uh-
Mr. Williams, if I may, um when you came out, it's totally different, you do not recognize property.
Okay, this is the first time I've heard about it since, when I got one of the emails the other day.
The problem, what we're running to do, including all these different locations, the A dam, EPA, I mean, you have to admit, even if you just got this office, what is your county commission doing? Nothing. You're doing nothing. You, you can do the same things that we're doing and we'll probably get better results than the county commission.
I don't know about that, I, I will be glad to put off, start with Jason, Health Department office.
Oh, he's worthless, sir, worthless, he's about to be promoted.
Well, he may not be worthless.
But here's what I want to show everyone on the commission. This is my state bar license. Early and Nichols has no license. He is operating without a license. Now, that is money that is not going into the coffers of Chilton County. How do I know he-
Well, that can be looked into.
Well, how do I know? Because I asked him in Spanish, usted tiene licencia? No, which means, do you have a license? No. Sir, I'm, when I tell you they have, they have brought in more dirt. More dirt. They have built a building on top of our easement. And I sent Mr. Niklase a letter explaining to him that if you had title insurance when you bought this property, you would have seen the easement to no avail. Basically, he probably took my letter and went file thirteen.
Okay, oh, I hate to call time, but I gotta call time unless some of the commissioners have a comment or a question.
No, sir, I I was hoping that this lady would go ding, that's enough. But I want to thank you all for allowing me to speak with you all. I look forward to working with you, like I said, um-
We'll find out about the business license more and I'll talk to Health Department also.
And that we've, we've already explained to the tax assessor about all of the improvements. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Have a good evening. Yes, ma'am, I'll be looking forward to it.
All right, let's see, that's all on public comments, Sheriff.
Good evening, well, ladies and gentlemen. Uh tonight I'll be asking for a resolution uh to hire James Dickens as full-time deputy sheriff.
Yes, sir.
What you wanting?
Yeah.
Can't, can't have him. We know him, so he worked us in jail.
Yeah, he's a good officer.
He's a good officer. Uh new hire Nicholas Cognasi as a full-time deputy sheriff. And we'll be asking for Trishawn Dennis as a full-time correction officer at the jail. And also to pay a bill for Gray's collision. I think we've already got the check, uh commission office told me we just gotta, just pay the bill, that's all we gotta do. So I'll just be asking for resolutions for that.
Uh any questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank y'all.
See ya.
All right, commission office, Ms. Sylvia.
Uh in your package, you had the water improvement project invoices. Um we'll be asking that those be approved and for the chairman to sign them for the Cassidy Company. Um also, uh we uh bid out dumpster service and Republic has come in with the uh lowest bid, um and they also uh offer an option of either one year, two or three. Uh but I'll be asking for uh awarding the dumpster bid. Uh we have another request for um a board replacement. Um and I believe in our old business for last meeting, we had that, uh we had it tabled, uh-
Yes, we, we tabled that and we, uh we need to discuss tonight how we're gonna go forward with the appointments to boards and authorities. Uh I think, as I said last, last time, we need to vet these because each one of them we appoint is a reflection on this body. And besides that, we need to know something about the ones we appoint, if they do have knowledge of the Water Authority, the library, whatever we appointed to. So I'd like your thoughts on how we should go forward, uh either the commission, do it as a whole, a committee, uh or how y'all think we should do that.
At a minimum, I'd, I'd like to see a committee, I don't mind if the whole commission is, is the committee, but we do need to have some type of interview process.
No more than three.
Yeah, no more than three, yeah. All right, everybody think a committee would be the way to go? How you wanna do the committee?
Tell about a, a co- outside committee, a committee of commissioners?
If we're gonna be doing the appointment.
I don't know, Mr. Childers?
They ain't nominating them now.
Well, I don't know, I don't know any of them, I don't know any of these people.
I know all of them.
I don't know.
I know all of them.
I don't know, I don't know neither of them.
Or do we want to have it as a personal interview vetting or what, what do y'all think?
So you only have one person?
Well, there'll be, there'll be other nominees. Yeah, this will be after the nominations are made.
Okay, yeah, yeah, 'cause I'm-
'Cause I have a nomination for one of them, uh probably two of them. Well, my thought was, you know, if, say the Water Authority nominates somebody that none of us are real familiar with, well, that person might not get a vote and whoever one of us nominate might get the vote or vice versa. I think, I think we ought to talk to them at least and see who we think's the best candidate for whatever we're hiring, uh appointing to.
That's what he's getting at.
I would interview and then take the recommendation of a committee.
That's what he's getting at.
Okay.
We're only three, three commissioners.
You just need three commissioners.
Okay.
Four else can't do it. Yeah, you just need three, yeah.
Commission choose elect them or you want me to appoint? We can do it either way.
It doesn't matter to me. Doesn't matter to me.
Not, well, we'll decide, we'll vote to do that one way or the other tomorrow night then. Okay, next.
Uh and thanks to Commissioner Bone, we finally have all the paperwork on the both parcels at Manuka. Uh so I'll ask tomorrow night if you'll approve um uh approve the glass property offer and, and purchase agreement and for the, um I think the chairman has already been authorized to sign that, but if you'll approve it. and for the, um, I think the chairman has already been authorized to sign that, but if you'll, uh, approve it, um...
Can we move forward with that as far as, how do we move forward with that? Do we get it purchased?
Uh, well, um, as soon as, as soon as we have this approved, I send the paperwork to, um, the grant writer, and she produces that, uh, for payment. So we receive payment so that we can have a closing on these properties. But we need all this paperwork. Yeah. I'm sorry, but it's a, it's just a timely thing, but at least we're still further than we have been.
Well, you know how long it takes to get grants done, so...
Closer than we was.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
We're a whole lot closer.
Um, also, um, uh, our attorney will be in attendance tomorrow night, and if we have any more questions about the fundraising resolution, um, I think, um, Chairman Williams, I think you spoke to him, and you have some things already set for, uh, rules or whatever for fundraising.
You talking about Will Ben? Yeah, I clarified it with Ben while we were in office. He's gonna put something together. Hopefully, have it for us tomorrow night, and we can start allowing fundraising for parks and, uh, animal shelter.
Okay. I suppose I see a few bad parts in there to it.
Oh, yeah. Well, what, what he's trying to do, he's trying to have one that's generic, that can, whatever organization within the county commission can, you know, they can accept donations. So it ain't, it ain't gonna be limited to just shelter for one, parks for another. Just one thing. Yeah, generic.
Well, I saw on TV an ad, I think it was for Clay County. There was an ad for Clay County's Animal Shelter with a QR code on the screen. This was on NBC thirty-three forty while I was watching you. And, um, where they put out an advertisement to get donations. So I assumed they, I, I doubt, I kinda doubted in my mind that they used some kind of budgeting to do that. There might have been a grant. We might need to check with our grant writer if they have some entertainment grant or something like that.
Didn't you mention that there was another county that had s- same situation with, for the parks?
Yeah, well, the park, the Parks Reg Board's in Coleman. At Stony Lonesome, on their website, has a QR code that you can donate through, uh, just, you know, to raise money to, for operation of the park. So we, we may want to ask her if, if we're missing out on some kind of money that we can use for public advertising to do those things, too, so...
Everybody, will you please put your phones on, uh, airplane mode? We're getting feedback through the speakers, I'm being told. I spoke to everybody that start with, I apologize.
The, is there any other discussion on that, or, um, of course, as I said, he'll be in attendance tomorrow, and we can, um, get further information or find out, uh, what exactly applies to counties.
Yeah, if it's something we can vote on, then we can vote on it tomorrow night. Get this started, okay?
Uh, the only other thing, I wanted to, uh, let you all know that, um, we have a narrow window of opportunity to work on our financials. We have to wait until the end of January because there's other information that we need. So now we are being contacted by S, by S and P, so that's what we're doing. We're working on our financial statements, and, um, it's quite involved. Uh, Makisha's done a lot of training for a couple of the others, uh, in the office, so we're, we're trying to work on financials. So if you need anything, just please contact me, and I'll make sure that it gets done as, uh, quickly as possible.
What she's trying to say is leave them alone while they're doing bookwork. I, I, my lady does that all the time. Do not bother me what I'm trying to get your paperwork done, so, you know, if you need anything, contact Ms. Sylvia directly until all the girls get this finished.
I did ask nicely.
You did. You did. I just made a little more blunt.
That's all I have.
Okay. Uh, E M A. Nick.
Hey, good evening, commissioners. Thank y'all. Um, so I know most of you are probably familiar with our equipment building that we've been trying to get built for about two years now. Uh, we had to go back and redo the bid process because the first one just came out way too high. Um, we finally got some that are in our range. Um, so I've got a resolution or would like to get one to accept and award bids. Um, and then also to pay for the dirt work, for the site prep, for the building out of the general fund or, and move it to the gasoline fund like Makisha's got on the paperwork here.
Okay. Now, you want to tell everybody how much money you saved about doing this?
From the original bids, uh, about two hundred and fifty thousand.
Yep. So we cut it in just a little bit more than half.
And we, now, we had to cut some stuff off the, I mean, it was under a hundred thousand what I cut off the building. It was, the, the dirt work was extremely high on those first bids. Um, and then there was just a couple other things that we could kind of fudge without that, that helped us get way down, but... Yeah, we almost fell out when we got those first bids in, so... Uh, the bid that will be awarded is two eighty-two, five oh-four, and the building size did not change, so we're still, uh, forty by eighty. Red iron. Now, now, this isn't just mine. This is my building between me and the sheriff, so he's gonna have items to store in there as well as some of my stuff, too, so...
Forty by eighty, Nick?
Uh, yes, sir.
Anybody got any questions? What are you, yeah?
Yes, sir, that's it.
Um, funds from the general fund due to those departments acting for equipment and labor.
That would encompass every...
We have supplemental materials coming up.
That. That's what you agreed on. We said thirty, we said estimate.
Do you already have a cost for the, uh, the materials?
It's just base material, it's independent.
Yeah, just whatever. Just, I mean, it's already, a lot of the prep work's already been done from...
Okay. Anything else, Nick?
Unless you got it.
Nope. Any other thing?
Thank y'all.
Glad to get this number. Okay. Uh, those of you who do not know, Commissioner Billingsley has Hodgkin's lymphoma, and he will be starting treatment shortly, and y'all keep him in your prayers. He's, he's apologizing that he can't be up here with us, so don't be surprised if you don't see him up to the next meeting. But y'all keep him in your prayers. He's getting good spirits, and I, he's, uh, like he and I talked about, my son had the same thing, and it is a curable one, so hopefully, you know, medicine will work. Okay, Commissioner Bone?
Uh, the guy with the cabins is unable to make it because he has COVID, so you can take that off. I am gonna be asking to advertise, uh, to hire for park and recreation's manager.
Okay. Got comments or questions? All right. Anything else?
Oh, I'd like to say, too, that, uh, Mr., since we bought that trailer, told y'all one time that, uh, he only dumped it one time as long as it began, almost...
Month and a half now?
Six weeks, yeah.
Yeah, he's only dumped it one time now. They dumped it like yesterday, was it?
No, I ain't dumped it yet.
You ain't dumped it yet? So there again, we was taking everybody else's trash off that dump at Higgins Ferry. So we actually save, save some taxpayer money on that as well.
I think we did, too. Based on the contract, we saved a little bit of money.
Yeah.
Okay.
So thank y'all for purchasing a trailer for Higgins Ferry to dump our trash only.
All right. You want to tell everybody about the meeting at Manuka with, uh...
The horses?
Yes.
I'll let you do that. That was more your idea, or more your...
Uh...
Veterans.
Oh, now, I went, I got brain power. I can't even remember his name.
I can't either.
Brian, Brian Eddy's his name, and it's, uh...
He's, he, he does, um...
He has a, he has a, uh, rehabilitation center, mostly for veterans and things, and he's out on Ketterell, sixteen. Bonfire Ranch. Thank you.
Boy, do we have a big brain party that one.
Boy, I had a major one. Uh, but they were really excited. Uh, Commissioner Bone rode them around on his side-by-side, showing them the property, and, uh, we're going to build some horse trails up there for them, and they have a lot of events during the year. And I think that's gonna be another good addition to Manuka Park. And basically, all we gotta do is cut some trails through for the horses. And that is the update on that. Okay. Anything else, Commissioner Bone?
No, sir.
Okay. Commissioner Childers?
Yes, sir. Um, little update on the animal shelter. We are being overrun with, uh, with animals. We, uh, the way that we're operating, we have to operate it seven days a week, whereas the previous operators could close it at most any time they wanted to if they were getting too many animals, and we can't. So we're at, uh, about a hundred, I heard a hundred and sixty. I didn't verify that. There's a hundred and forty-eight when I was live, just dogs. Uh, on top of that are the, are the cats, and there's something like forty-eight puppies, and less more came in today. And I'm talking about puppies that are, like, on their mom. And, uh, and so these young ladies are having to clean the cages three and four times a day. And on top of the regular feeding and cleaning. We, uh, um, I, I'm, I am gonna recommend tomorrow night that we have an emergency part-time hire on Tech One. Uh, we have, uh, three techs down there now, uh, with, uh, the director. And if it were not for the director working as a tech, we wouldn't be getting this done, and it certainly wouldn't be getting done over the weekend. So, um, we need her to be doing something besides teching. Uh, we need her out in the community and doing director-level stuff. But, uh, anyways, I'll be recommending, uh, emergency part-time hire for Tech One tomorrow night. Uh, good news is we have, uh, y'all approved the siding and the roofing, and that will start at seven o'clock in the morning. So, uh, they'll do the, uh, the station socket, and they'll end up wrapping it. And then, uh, the roof will go on. After that, the painting's already been approved, and we'll start painting on the outside. Uh, and, and once the painting's done, you've already approved the gutters, the gutters will go on, and hopefully we'll have it, you know, dry, and, uh, the castain is braided around it, so we've got water moving away from it, so we'll, we'll be high and dry, I hope. Um, I will recommend, I, I know in your packet there was, uh, HVAC and, uh, and the security. I'm pulling those right now. There's some questions. There's so many animals that she's having to reorganize where she's keeping the animals, particularly the car of all the puppies. Um, so we're gonna have to take a look at HVAC again, uh, not necessarily get numbers, but check out what design is best. And then, um, uh, the security quote came in just entirely too, too much, so we're gonna have to, uh, look at something different on security. We've got some down there that needs to be enhanced, and I'll be, uh, working on that and bring a recommendation hopefully in two weeks, so...
Okay.
Uh, I'm not mentioning, oh, I, I will be asking, thank you. Here's another good one. I will be asking for, uh, to, a resolution to set Windows two oh-five, Window World, uh, Wonder Windows two oh-five. Uh, they had the lowest bid. We're replacing four windows down there. And, uh, I'll be recommending that we, uh, accept their contract and with the chairman's ability to sign that tomorrow night.
Okay. Anybody got any comments on any of that? Anything else?
That says it.
All right. Mr. Hall? Mr. Headley? Mr. Perkins?
Yes. So let me, let me, uh, make sure I can get up here where everybody can hear. And, uh, everybody online can hear also, I would hope. Want to give an update. Last, I guess it was last Thursday when we had our public meeting, did a slideshow, uh, demonstrated at that time what the current subdivision regulations had in them, in, in part had in them, and then what we had proposed and a few revisions. It was a meeting designed to get public input, um, ideas, and learn from that, and try to then take those and work on revisions. And in our mind, we could possibly get that done and present it again to the commission to be ready in, in two weeks. Uh, we immediately, there was a lot of, there was a lot of, uh, there was a lot of constructive ideas on, in that, in that meeting that we took to heart. There was a lot of passion from the community. And I want to thank everybody for coming out. I think that the community needs to be involved in their local government, and that's, that's what the backbone of this country's built on. There has also, since Thursday, been a lot of misinformation that has gone around on multiple social media platforms, or either in the coffee houses, or the cafes, or, or what have you. And I want to try to clear up a few of these tonight, take just a few brief minutes in my public comments section to try to demonstrate what we're attempting to do, and a few of the revisions that we have talked about on how, what, what is important to us and how we represent the, the citizens of this county. So I'm gonna illustrate this like this. In two thousand and fifteen, the current guidelines were adopted by a former commission. Of course, the commission of Chilton County, two thousand and fifteen, adopted these guidelines. And in the past, as, as many of you have heard, they admittedly, uh, didn't read quite through all the, the revisions or through those regulations before they were passed. Um, a year and a half ago, I was campaigning, and it was brought to the commission's attention at that time, before I was commissioner, about how strict those regulations were, or the, uh, you know, the, how much it placed on the average individual citizen, right? So we, there was a big uproar then at that time, uh, with the current enforcement of those regulations, uh, being enforced, and how that mechanism worked, how, how it was gonna be handled, and, and so forth and so on. So what happened, the problem with the two thousand and fifteen rules are if this Coke bottle, and I, I hope everybody can see this, if this Coke can is a commercial developer that's developing a subdivision as the average, everyday citizen thinks of a subdivision, that has multiple houses in it, curbs and gutters, and they want the county to take that road to be a county-maintained road, then they're a developer, and that's what they're doing. If the Coke, if the water bottle represents myself or any of you that is here that is an individual citizen that is not attempting to do that, the current guidelines did not differentiate between the two. Y'all are the same. Y'all are treated the same. The individual that's trying to divide his property, not sell property, we weren't talking about the selling of a parcel, but the individual that's trying to divide their property, if they wanted to divide five acres or six acres or whatever, they were treated the same as a commercial developer. And that's a little ridiculous, in our opinion. So we set out, uh, after I was, I was elected. We, we as commission got a lot of input from everybody, and we set out to try to do one thing. And that one thing is to separate the individual from the developer. To take the rulebook by the use of exclusions and definitions, and to separate the developer from the individual citizen. Now, we went and talking about zoning. We're not talking about doing something on your property or what you can and can't build, or what you can and can't do, or if you can sell an individual parcel. We hadn't, we hadn't even spoken of any of that. Now, that got out there, and, and frankly, I, I even had some friends of mine that shared things or said things, and it got out of hand. And it was, some of it was a little ridiculous from the things that we heard that had never been mentioned. All right? And I understand... All right, and I understand some of the confusion because of the way we did this. But our total goal, it was some of the things that we've talked about since last Thursday even, because we, we attempted to make it clear that that wasn't the gospel, that we were there for the input of the people, we were there to listen to the people. And we want to take those regulations and place them on a developer, but not on Ms. Bonnie V. over here that's just trying to divide her property up. We want the rules to be on a developer and not the individual just trying to give his grandson some land. So we want there to be the rules on the developer and not those on the individual. Now, we've discussed some revisions since Thursday that in, even in Ms. Bonnie's case, that would, that would free that up because we're attempting to try to do just that. Where two thousand and fifteen has y'all as a developer. We want to make it clear what is a developer and what is not a developer. Now, saying that, I do not believe that throwing the book in the trash can is the proper and most responsible thing to do. I've spoken with developers and they all say, well, we, we go by these all the time, we know it. So throwing the book totally into garbage might not be the right thing to do. But being able to change that book to where it clearly defines who that developer is, is our goal. So having said that, it has always been my stance that we are representative leaders. The lady used that term prior, I ran on that term and I believe in that term. We, we see things and we, we try to plan for the future and for the protection of the citizens of this county. And we have, we have, there, in the light of a lot of the misinformation that's out there, I'm trying to use the illustration to clear it up, to make it. I mean, I've explained this hundreds of times. And the general, I, I've had hundreds of support calls and support texts saying, we need, we need regulations on a developer, but we don't want to be regulated ourself if we're just trying to sell an acre or so of land. So in light of that and knowing the need to, how important it is to get it right, I'm gonna be calling tomorrow for a suspension of the enforcement of the current subdivision rules for a period of three months to allow us to rewrite the subdivision regulations in a more clearly and precise manner that clearly defines who a developer is and who an individual citizen is and put the rules on the developer and not put the rules on the citizen. And that's what I'm gonna be asking for.
And I'll second that, I agree with tomorrow night.
So, so, so you're gonna deal with any kind of regulations at all for three months?
I'm gonna suspend the enforcement of the regulations. That, that will buy us, I think that will buy us enough time to clearly... Yeah.
And that'll give us time to go back through and add things that we gleaned in the hearing and then, uh, maybe some, we've done some research.
So you knew whatever you want to, whatever you got for three months?
Unfortunately, that'd be the one of the...
That's, that's, that's a little, yeah.
Well, I'm gonna give my opinion.
You know, now, I'm, I'm not for regulating people's stuff, but just, just letting them do anything they want to do for three months.
No, no, there's still state regulations and stuff, and water mitigation and all that, all that's, that's not just in our, so, or our regulations.
Last Friday, I had a conversation with Commissioner Perkins after the meeting and I was not real clear on the direction. First of all, I want to commend both of them, the amount of time they put into getting to this point. Now, I'm not saying I agree with what they had, but they did put in a lot of time trying to make this better for the county. Now, this, I think, is another step in the right direction because I would've put a motion on the table tomorrow night to do away with it. But he took what I asked him, determined to find a developer because I don't see anybody in this room that I know is a developer. If there is, okay. But I'm not a developer, most every citizen in this county is not a developer. And if I want to sell two acres of land to a neighbor to pay a medical bill for my grandmother, whoever, then I shouldn't have to ask anybody for that. And I think that's the direction they're going now. And I'm all in favor of giving them three months to do this. So I won't be, I told some people I was gonna put that motion up tomorrow night. I'm not gonna put that motion up tomorrow night. I'm gonna give these men three months to come up with what they need to come up with. And if it goes in the direction of what I just heard, I don't, I don't have a problem with it. And I'm one of them that don't want nobody telling me what I'm gonna do on my property. And I feel confident that's what it's going with. Because I told Roger, Commissioner Perkins, that all the mandates we need to abide by is what state says. Two-thirds of an acre is safety time and whatever the others are. That's only, that's the only thing individuals should have to worry about, not any of these others. Let the developers, who quite frankly got us into this position and start with because of selling lots on roads and telling people the county's gonna take over this road once we get these lots filled. And I don't know a non-maintained road in this county that that's happened on yet. That's where I came from with this.
If I want to go to my place and put a, a little tiny home park up for twenty tiny homes in this next three months, I can do that, no problem. That's all, that's all I have.
Anybody else got a comment?
Mike.
I'm, I'm open here.
Well, I, I, I'm fine with, if somebody wants to speak, I'm fine with it.
Come on up, Mike. Come on up to the microphone, tell us, tell everybody who you are.
I'm Mike McGee, I'm a builder here, uh, also a state licensed general contractor.
He's a coke king.
And that Coke can is real important because that was my whole point of getting out with the people to, we was gonna have a meeting at the church, let the people sign petitions because my whole idea, idea in theory on a builder or developer is if you selling lots to the public, there's no doubt in my, that is a full-blown subdivision. If it's an individual selling a lot for a guy to build a house over here, one lot, or his son, he's, that's not a subdivision. And all these restrictions and the hundred and fifty-foot rideaway or a lady that's just got a sixty-foot easement tent getting to her property for fifty acres and she can't do nothing with it because she's only got a sixty-foot rideaway, which is legal in the state of Alabama. No reason to turn that lady down. So that was my whole thing is be fair. If it's, if this lot sold to the public, the general public, that is a subdivision and it ought to be held to a subdivision rule. If it's an individual selling a lot or giving a lot to his daughter or son or, or nephew, that's not, that shouldn't classify as a subdivision. And I, I commend y'all for what you did because it was getting to where it was okay. But some of the restrictions still on a, a guy out here that owns his own property in rural county shouldn't have that restriction on him. That was my whole point.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, Mike.
All right, all minds up here satisfied on this? Okay, Commissioner Perkins, you got anything else?
Uh, do not.
Okay, this is not on the agenda, but I'm gonna violate my own twelve-thirty policy of Friday because this needs to be discussed.
If, 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 Mike, I forgot, I left one thing out. What about if, uh, the water meters now, can, can I?
That's what I'm on.
Water meters if I want twenty?
That's what I'm on right now. Uh, we got burned pretty good Thursday night about us not allowing Chilton Water to place water meters. Well, I'm gonna ask this commission to give me the authority to write a letter to Chilton Water saying that is not for us to say, we're not asking you to, uh, make someone abide by subdivision rules. That's your rules, your water, your meters. So I don't want this commission getting beat up again, Reverend.
About water meters.
So, so my, my statement is this. Years ago, that was used as the, the flag for the identification of a subdivision that was being developed. That's the only way this commission, not this one, but any commission here, prior, whatever, had a way to know if there was a development going on. That's what was used and I'm all in favor of you sending the letter. I don't think that, um, that water company should be, um, withholding that particular service. I think they should be making money.
That's the same thing Jason and I discussed before the meeting, that's why I went out in the hall and talked to him. Uh, the discussion that we had, uh, back in September, October was asking if we could be, no, further back than that, asking if we could be notified by COOP, Alabama Power, Chilton Water, anybody, if there was fixed, set a new service so we could know if it was a subdivision. And somehow, I think that was, maybe should've been the intent. I don't think it was the intent when they did this and asked Chilton Water. And it wasn't a resolution of this commission, to my knowledge.
Well, it is part of the current, it's part of the current enforcement. It's in, it's in Article One, under enforcement.
Yeah.
But it doesn't direct who, who is allowed to go and deny the, the water or utilities. But it is part of the enforcement.
Well, we're not gonna be the one, well, if, if I gotta say, we're not gonna be the one telling them they can't give them a meter. That's more brave than you to the Chilton Water. Okay, uh, the other thing is I've sent each one of you a proposal and I'm gonna be asking for a resolution tomorrow night to adopt driveway covert policy. And what that policy is, if there's a pipe going in a driveway along any county road, that the engineer has to sign off on it. Reason being, it becomes our property when it goes in the ditch. And if we've got to maintain it, we've got to take care of it, then we should have the say of where that pipe's gonna be. Because I went down a road, dirt road the other day and there was two pipes I don't believe our engineer would've signed off on because one of them was right over the crest of a hill. And, no, we didn't have it in there to that extent. We'll, we'll put the pipe in if they buy it.
Yeah.
I thought that was in the resolution, but it wasn't.
I tell you something else I feel like too is the pipes should have to be either concrete or plastic, no metal pipe. We need to get away from them metal pipes. They fall in about twenty years and you've got to go back, dig them out, put in, uh, that plastic to stay there.
When plastic will come drop, it'll come back to its shape or close to it more than a metal. When you mash a metal pipe down, a lot of driveways you'll look at, pipe's been run over and mashed down. Okay, well, that's, anybody got any?
You got a question, Mike, on the watering?
All right, anybody got any comments on that? If not, we'll adjourn this work session, meet back six-thirty tomorrow night.